The zoning board appeals of the town of Newcastle, October 16th, 2019. We're here this evening to hear the Homeland Towers LLC, T-Mobile Northeast LLC, and New Singular Wireless PCS LLC wireless telecommunications facility application.
Hello. Good evening. My name is David Kenny. I'm an attorney with Snyder &amp; Snyder. With me tonight is Vincent Xavier from Homeland Towers. This application is fairly straightforward. This is regarding an area variance for a side yard setback. The code requires a 35-foot side yard setback, but the equipment compound is 17 feet from the northeast property line. This is a telecommunications facility on town property on Barnes Lane. This has already been the review of a planning board application as well as an environmental conservation board approval. Both the planning board approval and the environmental conservation approval have already been issued. The planning board approval was issued on September 17th. And it was noted then that there's been recent amendments to the town code whereby the planning board, under the previous version of the town code, could waive the setback requirements. That power to waive has been reduced by the new amendments, and they cannot waive the setback requirements further than the underlying zoning setback requirements. So the 35 side yard setback requirement is something that this board would have to issue an area variance for. The planning board did recommend approval and issued a positive recommendation for the granting of the variance. So we're here for requesting respectfully an approval for the area variance for the side yard setback and to answer any questions the board may have regarding this application.
So could you just describe in layman's detail this equipment that's in the side yard? How is it different than the tower or anything else?
So the tower is essentially the monopole, and that'll be what the antennas are on. The equipment at ground level will power those antennas. So those are usually batteries, generators, the more typical equipment that you would see, kind of almost similar to HVAC equipment, but this is in a ground within an equipment compound that's completely fenced in and secured.
So this doesn't typically reside at the base of a tower? It's offset in some regard?
So they are near the tower base, but usually what you want to do is have enough space for the ability to grow for co-location. So this right now is a facility for two carriers are being co-located on this facility after this approval. But there is potential for the future carriers, additional carriers, to co-locate on this facility, such as we could have Verizon or...
AT&amp;T.
Well, AT&amp;T is part of this application, T-Mobile, but it could be municipal equipment. It could be another carrier that comes in with the Sprint and T-Mobile merger. There's been speculation that Dick might emerge as the fourth carrier. So it has the ability to have the need for a future carrier that might have another need for towers elsewhere in the town to have this town kind of guide them to maybe co-locate at this facility.
But as opposed to this equipment being at the base and then future expansion, extending further into the setback, if you will, you've chosen this location for what reason?
If I could, if I could just draw your attention to SP2 and the plans, I put it up here. I think it shows it pretty well. This equipment here is going to be for AT&amp;T, where my little hand is. This will be T-Mobile. This 10 by 10 square is reserved space for municipal use, which in addition to the planning board approval, this is obviously approved by the town board as well during the lease process. And part of that is that the town and municipal entities will be able to use the tower free of charge. And this is space that is reserved at the base for that use for free. And then you have this area here, which would directly be Verizon and a fourth carrier, Sprint or some other carrier. The additional expansion, as you note here, would be away from the property line. So it would not require us to come back for any additional setbacks in the future. And lastly, I would just point out that the setback property line from which we're being setback from is also property owned by the town of Newcastle and the village of Pleasantville, which have both executed an access easement for us to get to this property. So both the village and the town are fully aware of the status and that property line is shared by them.
Where is the tower?
The tower would be this area.
And another reason for the location on the property is that to the south, almost southwest, there's wetlands on the property. So we located this to get the furthest way possible from the wetlands so that we could mitigate any potential adverse effects to those wetlands.
And on the other side, this area here, which was actually more open and flat, is reserved for the town to install a salt shed in the future. So we cannot go any further this way.
This is built on a cement slab or something?
Each the equipment or the tower itself?
Everything. Is that that pad that we're looking at?
No. What you're seeing in the square here, this is going to be a fenced-in gravel compound. Underneath each carrier's equipment, they will have a slab on grade. You know, they used to put piers and then put like an equipment shelter. They've gotten away from that. It would usually be a slab on grade with either an elevated steel platform or with the equipment directly on the pad, which basically looks like refrigerators. The tower itself is going to have a subterranean foundation, which goes to about six feet below ground. It's going to be 30 by 30, more or less. I have to look at the actual tower drawings. About 30 by 30 and about two and a half to three feet thick. All of that will be underground. Only thing as far as the foundation you would see would be the pier sticking up upon which the tower is bolted onto. But the rest of the compound itself is going to be gravel. This area here with this dark thatch mark, this is actually going to be a water management system where all the water from the access road and from the east would go into this system to be filtered. And so basically that area within the compound is basically going to be unusable to us anyway, but it was required as part of the design and the town engineers during the planning review process.
And again, as a reminder, this application has gone through a site plan and special permit review with the planning board, reviewing drainage and all of those.
So I'm sorry, are you finished with the planning board?
Correct. They issued an approval on September 17th.
And it's subject to getting the variance?
Correct. It's conditioned upon getting the area variance.
This equipment is, you could see it from Campfire?
Highly unlikely. You know, if you got out of your car, because the equipment itself from Campfire Road is at least 15 to 20 feet lower because there's a big drop off. That's what actually created the wetlands. It's really just the water overflow coming from Campfire. So it is lower. And there is still going to be trees between this and Campfire. But if you got out of your car, went over and looked down, yeah, you're probably going to be able to see the equipment. But you'd really have to want to go look for it to in order to see it, in my opinion.
And is that going to be like, is it a normal tower? Or is it going to be like a tower that disguises it?
This is a normal tower. And it's actually intentional because most of the viewpoints, although they were very, very slim, I'm actually proud of the site because it's as far away from houses as we can get. But the viewpoints to the west, if any, would have the also galvanized transmission lines behind it. So a galvanized regular tower actually does blend in, believe it or not, to those galvanized transmission lines behind it. And we believe that it would actually be more aesthetically pleasing than having a potentially odd-looking monopine or something sticking out when this blended in with the transmission towers better.
The frankenpine on the hutch usually gets negative opinions, so.
That was the first of its kind, wasn't it?
I bring this up, I said this before, but everybody brings up the hutch one. The hutch one does look bad if you're driving on the hutch, but for those residents on the side, it actually isn't bad because it's blending into the hills on the side. So that one gets a bad rap. The actual quality of that tree is bad. You know, I personally like the trees. We built one on 2580 with 35 in Amawak right as you're passing the dam on 35. And when they're sighted well and the trees are designed well, not cheaply, they can look good. But here, we really believe it was in the best interest and based on the terrain than the existing poles, that a straight galvanized pole here was best.
And what's the height of the pole?
It's 150 feet. It was originally proposed at 180 feet, but through the application process, it was reduced to 150 feet.
And were there, was there any opposition noted by neighbors during the planning board?
There is one neighbor who was opposed to it, and she is, let me see if I can bring up a bigger site plan. Hard to see, but on this, she owns a property way over here, and her house is way over here. We were asked specifically to go to her house. We did visuals from her street. She's not going to be able to see this tower from her house. And that's often the case, that when you're the closest to the tower, you don't see it because you're looking at ground level up through what had to be 1,000 feet of woods. So she was considered, she was heard, and you know, we took pains to take her into account and really go to her house specifically.
Had the discussion been made at all to make it look like a tree?
It was discussed, and it was a part of the visual analysis.
I believe it was determined, as Vincent said, because it's located near the existing power lines, that it looks more, yeah, it looks more kind of that.
I know it's power line.
So let the record show that there are no neighbors who have appeared at this meeting to voice any objections. Tom, do you have anything to add? Eric, anything?
So the tower itself is not within the 35-foot setback or it is?
No, the tower itself is more than 60 feet away, and we do have a fall zone letter that shows that if the tower were to collapse, it would fall within the property lines. And that fall zone letter was actually produced when the tower was designed at 180 feet. So it's even more likely to fall within the property lines.
What were the setbacks within the code for the wireless facilities? What was the increased setback? Do you remember?
Two times the height of the tower.
Okay. So the planning board granted...
The waivers for those where they couldn't go to the underlying.
Beyond the 35 foot. So the planning board already reduced the required setbacks for the wireless facilities within the telecommunications law.
And again, the location was guided with the planning board's help because of the wetlands that were on the property to make sure we could be the furthest away from those wetlands.
So there was no other place to put this?
No, not other than making more of an impact to the wetlands or taking away the DPW facility that is proposed on the same property.
Are there cables to support this or no, it doesn't need cables?
It's not a guide tower. No, it's a self-supporting monopole.
Is it one piece or it's multiple pieces?
Probably three pieces. Yeah. They all get stacked in one day.
Are you here to comment on this application?
I think I hear the public hearing about the tower.
I'm sorry.
Yes, she's here for the public hearing.
She's actually the bureau's reference.
Okay.
Oh, she's the neighbor?
Correct.
Okay. Did you want to, did you want to make a statement to the board?
No, my English, actually, my English is no good. I just come and say some opinion about the tower. That's all. I can't clearly listen to the English.
Okay, so if you have something to say, we can listen.
Yeah, I want to say my opinion. Actually, I don't like the tower.
I'm sorry, before you get started, could you just give us your name and address for the record, please? No, just speak it. If you could just tell us.
Because my English is no good, so I...
Neither's mine, so don't worry about that. You can just let our secretary know.
Yes, I live in the 70 Cabin Ridge Road. My name is Zhiyang.
Could you spell that, could you spell that for us? Your name?
My name is Zhi, Z-H-I, Y-A-N-G-A-I. I think I'm near the tower, the property near the tower. The property, the tower will be at my north of my property.
So what we've heard this evening is that from your home, it will be difficult for you to see the actual tower because of the trees and other vegetation that are between the tower and your home.
Actually, I think they have a request. My property have a 4.5 acre. I want to build a new house inside, not below my house. My house is the south of my property. So I need a subdivision of my property to build a new house because my house only 1,000 square. It's too small for my son and my daughter. So I can't see in my house to see the north. I can't see, I can't see that because you can see my house is south. They built the tower by north. Actually, the property by north is I planted to build the new house. That's why. So I think if they build the tower, you know, it would be damaging my property value.
I'm sorry, it would damage your property?
Yeah, value.
Yes, I said, so I'm sorry, I'm not sure that I followed the...
I can see that you're building a new house, and that new house will see the tower.
So is that correct? I'm sorry. It's not your house today, but the house that you hope to build in the future that you think could be impacted by the location of the tower?
Yeah, I think it's near the, near the tower. I see, I don't, I don't how to say English, so I write something down.
Okay. So I'll just read this into the record. I disagree on building the tower at Six Station Place because, one, the tower will be built in the forest near the wetland and destroy the natural environment. Two, it will damage the woodsy view. It would be an eyesore. Three, it will damage the residents' property values, reducing property taxes. Four, she anticipates there will be advanced technology soon. Things like Amazon or SpaceX will launch thousands of satellites to provide internet. If it's easier.
Sure. If we could just make a quick response to those comments. First, we did, as we said before, we went through a whole planning board process, and this neighbor was at the planning board hearings. Her comments at that planning board hearing were taken into account. However, the planning board decided that the location of the property was going to have no effect or no adverse effect on the wetlands. That's why the location at the far end was chosen. The damage regarding the woodsy view, there was a balloon test done as part of this application process. There were several photo simulations, including one specifically from her neighborhood as well as her property. Those were taken into account to the planning board's approval resolution. The damage to the property values, again, those were also considered by the planning board in its approval resolution. And as far as the advanced technology, this facility is not for producing internet. It's actually a telecommunications service. It's a little bit different than information services, which is purely internet. So this technology is not being phased out in any time. In fact, there's more and more facilities being installed and constructed in municipalities because there's capacity issues and coverage issues that require actually more facilities, not less facilities. So if anything is trending into more, you'll see more of these applications in the future.
Did you understand what the gentleman had to say? I'm not asking you to agree. I'm just asking if you...
Yeah, I don't understand, but I think as my, myself, when I at home, I have wifi. When I go out, completion building a place, we have wifi. So I don't understand that. I just say my opinion is, I think now is okay. If you have a strong wifi, you can use the wifi when you're driving, use the phone. So I don't understand why build a tower now.
Again, wifi technology is a little bit of a different technology than telecommunications services. And as part of this application, both AT&amp;T and T-Mobile provided radio frequency justification information for reasons why that they need this facility to continue to operate their FCC licensed personal wireless services.
I'm here from AT&amp;T, but you basically...
No, if you have something to add.
No, I don't have anything to add. That was exactly the position we were going to explain is that we, that... So it's Neil Alexander, my partner, Cuddy and Fader here behalf of AT&amp;T. And as noted, our submission along with T-Mobile, who's the other carrier proposed by Homeland Tower to use this facility, it was vetted by a third-party expert that the municipality you all hired, the planning board hired. I understand you're a different board, but the planning board hired that, and they took charge on that because of the nature of the application and the relative jurisdictions. You know, we're here, as you know, and I know this is... Tonight's application is really the ability to put the tower closer to the side yard of the property to keep it away from the wetlands. That's really what's being balanced tonight. And I think, I don't know if that makes sense. So the last meeting with the planning board, they said this use on this property is acceptable, and they gave that approval. And they said, but when you're building it, we'd like it to be closer to this border in order to keep you farther from the wetlands. And that's what we're trying to get permission to do right now because the town board actually changed the code while we were doing our application.
I don't understand what you say, but I say, I listen a little about my building because I have a 4.5 acre, and the 4.5 acre always is in the east. So whatever north, whatever south I can build because there's one acre only. That's you say. So if you build a house...
Where my hand is, is her property. So what we're asking is for the facility to be as far from her property as possible by granting her the setback and letting us be over here.
Right. And did I understand you to say, what size is your property? 4.5 acres?
Yes.
And I'm sorry, which number is your property?
This one, 23.
So it's the closest one to the...
It is.
And 22 and 25, the other properties, are there homes in those, all those?
I'm not sure about 25. I know 22 definitely was. We met with them on their property, took photos from their property, met the husband and wife.
And I believe they agree that they wouldn't be likely to see the tower from their home at 22.
We submitted a special separate visual report to document specifically Cabin Ridge Road. It was taken into account.
And the whole area between the telecommunications facility and her property is wooded, so it's not a clear view anyway. It would be through heavily dense vegetation.
I would just say to you that when the time comes, that you're moving forward with constructing your new home, I can only imagine that if you require any approvals from the town, that they would take into account the location of the tower, granting you relief where appropriate. So when and if that time comes, I hope that that is something that you can understand and appreciate.
Actually, I don't understand. I just read something, that's why. But I just...
No one in my family understands me either, so it doesn't really matter. But all I'm saying is, you've said that you hope in the future build a home, another home.
That's why I bought the house, because I bought the house because they have too many acre. I can build a new house, not when I bought the house. But now you tell me you will build a tower. And if even I can build a house, I can't sell out, or I can't sell out the other old house. So anyway, this tower is built, damaging my value and destroying my schedule. And even if now I want to sell, no people can sell because they, oh, they will build a house. I can't build a new house. They will build a tower. So I can't sell the house now. And I can't build a new house. So I don't know what I can do.
Let me ask you this question. If, is there anything that you think this applicant could do in establishing this tower? Is there anything that they could do to mitigate the impact as it relates to you?
Actually, I don't consider this question because I think, that's why I don't know what they say technology. I just, we don't need, if it is very useful, I see in the mountain crystal, two times they reject build a tower. My English is no good, but I can understand why they reject mountain crystal two times built a tower. If the tower is useful, why they reject? That's one. The second, I see, I don't know, I don't understand the technology. But as a Newcastle resident, even you have a stronger wifi, you can use when you're driving?
Understanding, this is about telephone, telephonic uses, not computer-related uses. Is that right?
They're bundled, but it's a telecommunications, personal wireless services.
I think separate from that, if I may? I think that turn of the road is passed, and that was a different board's jurisdiction? Do you want to go there, Eric?
Well, yeah, this board would not be able, would not be able to make a determination for the need for the tower at this point.
No, we're assuming it's needed.
Well, it's already been determined.
I'm just trying to clarify something for...
The need and the potential for alternatives and all that have been considered.
This has nothing to do with internet.
No, this has to do with personal wireless services, which sometimes you can access internet from your phone, but this has to do with the telecommunications service. And again, just the statement regarding wifi, it's just regardless of whether you have a wifi signal, that's not what this facility is about. This is about a telecommunications facility, the bars on the phone rather than the wifi signal.
And that's not even where we are right now. I think that's where, that's what I'm trying to get at.
We're just considering...
But I think, the only reason why I'm not pounding, I think that's creating confusion as to the scope of tonight while we're trying to clarify, to help. Because I think your other question was very salient, and I appreciate where you're going in order to try and address thoughtful comments, a little bit of a language challenge we're having. So your other comment question, I think, was very valid. I just didn't, I don't think it helps us when we go the other direction. That's really what I was just positing respectfully.
Okay. I have a question. Yes, okay. The, you mentioned that there are other wires in that area, high-tension wires? And approximately where are they located?
If you look on this, this strip here is the conated power lines.
And those are those big, and are they visible from property 23?
You know what? I don't think they are either because, again, she's looking through dense forests all the way to these.
We didn't take photos in that direction, but from Teconic Parkway, just a little bit further away, they are visible from there.
Because Teconics are the higher elevation, it's a lower elevation. If during the process, obviously, as I said, we took special care to consider Cabin Ridge Road. If there was some mitigation, we're already, as part of the planning board approval, required to put money into a tree fund. In other municipalities, we have established escrow accounts where neighbors could use the funds to help on their own property plant trees. But in this instance, when we looked at it, there was nothing we could do to mitigate it because there was nothing to mitigate.
Was there, was there a secret review done?
Correct. That was one part of it.
Was it an enlisted action or what was it considered?
It was enlisted, so they did it. There would have been an environmental finding that they were bound by as well.
And in addition, you know, as Vincent said, tonight's approval is, again, to move this facility as the furthest away from this neighbor's property as possible.
Right, right. Oh, good, good. Okay, okay. Michael, too. I move that we close over Karen.
I second the motion.
Wasn't there to say aye? I will make a motion. I move that the board approve the application of Homeland Towers, T-Mobile Northeast, New Singular Wireless for their wireless telecommunications facility. This application comes before the board after passing through the planning board review. A planning board granted their approval on September 17th, 2019. The town has granted easements as it relates to the installation. This will result in a variance of 18 feet into the side yard. The applicant has made every effort to avoid the wetlands and to minimize its impact on surrounding neighbors. and to minimize its impact on surrounding neighbors. There will be no undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. The benefit cannot be sought through other means or methods. The variance, though substantial, again, has taken into account those elements that I've mentioned before. There will be no adverse impact on the physical environment. And this is this alleged difficulty has not been self-created by the applicant. We have had one neighbor who spoke in opposition this evening. The applicant has addressed those issues as best they can. What what is the installation time period and?
Well, ideally, I would.
What remains to be done after tonight's meeting?
Well, after tonight, I'll be submitting all the documents and checks required pursuant to the planning board resolution, including establishing a tree fund, weather mitigation fund, drawings for the planning board chairman to sign off on. I intend next week to file for the building permit application, for the building permit, rather. After that, you know, as soon as we issue a building permit, we're going to move forward very rapidly. To that end, I would ask that if you do approve it tonight, that the resolution be drafted for final issuance at your next meeting on the twenty-eighth. And that in consideration of our desire to begin construction before the cold weather hits us, that we be allowed to proceed with the understanding that the, the approval is still subject to the thirty-day permission referendum, thirty day under the Article seventy-eight. And that if we do move forward, we would do so knowingly at our own risk, knowing that if an Article seventy-eight process did commence, that we would be required to stop construction at our own cost and at our own risk. So I would ask that, again, that we, you know, draft the resolution with the twenty-eighth and.
Yeah, that that would be up to you, I mean, that wouldn't be part of the resolution, actually. You'd be able to proceed at your own risk, unless the resolution is approved and filed, that's.
Soon as we get the building permit.
The one other thing you should know, Mr. Chairman, is that that the planning board did grant site plan and special permit approvals on September seventeenth for the, you know, proposed tower and associated equipment.
So noted. So you will be starting within six months?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Otherwise, I'm fired.
And then, okay, and then, how long will it take to complete the installation?
You know, during the, generally, we say three months, but during this timeframe, because of the winter, you know, the holidays, things may slow down.
Let me make it simple on you, can you finish within a year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. So you'll have six months to start, one year to complete. And do we need?
Survey.
We need a.
Survey.
Post-completion survey?
Understand.
And and we'll be doing post-installation approvals and and plans with the planning board as well. And I believe the planning board approval does have a one-year timeframe on it as well.
Okay. I have a second.
Motion.
All of us, please, ever say aye?
Aye.
Post. Thank you, you have your variants.
Thank you, your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And thanks again for meeting tonight, especially. Yeah.
Yeah, Nick Yankins were nice and canceled for us.